Good evening. I'd like to call the Plainfield Board of Education Special Meeting to order tonight, Wednesday, May 3rd. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening. Tonight's special meeting is in regards to the budget. And we are here tonight to discuss the Board of Finance reduction that took place on May 3rd of $400,000, in addition to some other information as well pertaining to budget. So at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Brenton.
Thank you. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak on the budget. When we talk budget tonight, I'd like to just frame for the board, we presented our budget at the start of the year, we talked about our goals in curriculum, instruction, and operation. I've worked very hard with all of our administrators today, following last night's meeting, and particularly with Mr. Richards, to do two things. One was to really focus on those things we need to achieve our goals. Remember that in instruction, there are some things, we think of all things in three levels. What are we mandated to do? What are the things that we do to support our students in those areas? How do we achieve our goals? And then what are those things that if we have to make a hard decision, we're going to make a hard decision? So it's nice really about hard decisions. Last night, we were asked the question, what could you cut? And I think the first selectman said it well when he said, "We presented the budget for what we need. We didn't put something additional in our budget." So I'm going to say that with the spirit of, the things I talked to you about, many of them are very hard decisions. Some of them are very hard personnel decisions. And those are pieces that I want to talk to. Additionally, I've spent really some time, and I have to compliment Mr. Richards, in going through the budget. Mr. Richards has done an outstanding job of looking over things and saying, "Mr. Brenton, when you speak to the board about budget, I want you to talk about these other areas, because these are areas where I anticipate there being additional increases." So I'd like to start by talking to those, and I have the entrance, anyone who wants to see it, and I have it here for the Board of Ed. So, we received this letter, while this letter is, well, maybe we see it, we received this letter on Friday, it's dated April 25th. This letter is from C.M. Barrows STEM Academy. It states that effective July 1st, 2023, they have increased their tuition by 10%. We have 46 students this year attending Charles H. Barrows STEM Academy. We believe we'll have 47 next year, so we anticipate that to be a tuition increase of about $46,000. So when we're looking at budget reductions today, there's a few other things that I would like you to consider. I've given this list, which is here, to the board. In speaking with Mr. Richards and Mr. Sugarman, there are two software adjustments based on cost. Remember, I said to you that we were getting software quotes in of about 7% to 10% of increases. There are two areas that they've asked me to share, one of which is Lightstream. Lightstream is part of a larger system that does our security and is taking over on individual pieces. MLP is the Frontline My Learning Plan Program, which we've utilized for several years. The fees are adjusted EACs fees that we did not have in the previous budget. And then finally, the document storage is adjusted storage costs, which Mr. Richards appropriately pointed out, I've underbudgeted. Now again, when we talk through the cuts, I would ask the board, the target that we discussed earlier was 425. I'm going to try to speak to the board about 462 with the board's permission. It's not my desire to cut 462, but I would rather make the cuts now with board input, than come back to the board in September and say, "We were surprised by this anticipated cost." However, I will defer to the board on any of these items. The list that I put together was a difficult list. I'm going to talk item by item, and then hand it over to the board chair, so that the board can give us some input. I've gotten input from the leadership team. Obviously, the leadership team wants none of these things cut. I'll share that list out, we can speak through it, and then we can talk about what cuts or adjustments might need to be made. So the superintendent's handout list, I'm going to go to a Google Sheet, but let me speak through each one of these items, and then I'm going to put up a Google Sheet so people can see math as I go. The very first item that we spoke to is the full grant of the Central Office ECC readiness design that was presented in the last board meeting and shared with the town. I have the exact number of what the savings we believe would be projected out. Thank you very much to the ECC Administrator for helping me put the exact number today. That's a program change. The second program possible change would be to eliminate New England Science and Staling from the schools. New England Science and Staling is a program that provides STEM activities through students within our elementary schools. They travel through our schools. It also includes field trips out. I would note that part of the reason why New England Science and Staling was offered was in response to parents stating that they wanted more programs like the programs at Charles H. Barrows, where we currently have 46 families choosing to go to access different programs. The next item on this list is summer school. That is not the special education summer school, that is the general education summer school. These are the programs for students such as the programs at the middle school. The next item is an item that was discussed with the board previously and discussed with the Board of Finance. That is the elimination of one administrator in the district, that would be a high school assistant principal. You'll note that the savings on that in year one are only $45,000. That has to do with the way in which the contracts work. And the way in which the contracts work is that there is a clause based on elimination of a position, an individual in a certified position remaining at salary, filling the position of another individual. So that is the difference in year one, as you'll note in my handout at the bottom. In the 2023 budget, that would be savings of $45,000. In the 2024 budget, in year two, that would be savings of $125,000. So that's a cut should the board decide to make. We would really be looking at cuts this year, but a larger cut for the following. And these are all difficult to discuss. The next cut would be, were we to reduce an LPN? That's a practitioner named Nurse. That's not a cut I would recommend, but we do have a nurse at each school. The reduction of the Sacred Heart interns, those are the remaining Sacred Heart interns on this list. I would note that those interns have turned into teachers for us and do a lot for our students. But again, we're in a difficult position. The only actual position that I will discuss with the position's location is that we have had a retirement of our media center person here at Plainfield High School. I've spoken to Dr. Bitgood. Dr. Bitgood believes that we have the ability to absorb that position fully, or to transfer a hair professional or other individual into that position. He has a plan to redesign this into a more modern arts and digital media media center, and he believes that's a position he can absorb. We have elective retirements. I would be very remiss to cut an elective teacher, because that is a full program that a student's not getting. Let me explain what that means to the board and the general public. If an elective teacher is cut in an area like family consumer science, that is, family consumer science classes not being offered at Plainfield High School. However, I was asked to bring every possible option to the board, so I'm bringing them. Our budget calls for $100,000 in computer purchases. That is both staff computers and student computers. There is the possibility to potentially reduce some of that number. I would say my administrators were not supportive of reducing other supplies, given reductions that we've made. That is a possibility to a maximum of $30,000. And there was not a lot of support from my team for this reduction either, but in the spirit of last in, first out, we spoke at the Board of Finance meeting last night about, did you add any new positions? I realize I misspoke. We did add two elementary security guards this year. It's not my recommendation, I'm providing options to the board. So what I would like to do is, I would like to hand this back over to the board chair. This is how I have put them together. I put this together as a group. One recommendation that I would choose to make to the board, as the board has already voted, on the full ECC, so that the public can see where these pieces are. That number's 247 right there. And I'd open the floor to the board chair and other members of the board for discussion.
All right. So let's go ahead and have discussion. I think we can all be in agreement, based on the April meeting, that the 247767 is one of the ways to offset some of this. So that gets us a little over halfway there in terms of everything. So far, running through, we're at 247767. I think at this point in time, being May 1st, and where we are, I think we have no choice but to let the summer school program go for PCNS, because to put that program into place before the end of school, with what we were very nervous about for a budget, I think would be very hard.
Yeah, I'd have to agree on those two. Central Office ECC readiness merge, that is something that we discussed, so it will end up being okay. The summer school program, extremely disappointed that we do have to let that go. That's a very valuable program. Even more disappointed by the other things that we have on this list that we are putting up on the chopping block. I think that any of these programs, anything being cut here, directly affects students. I'm immensely disappointed and deeply saddened that we do not have more members of the public, particularly those that were very, very eager to continue the death spiral that we are putting these schools in. This is absolutely absurd, that we tried our hardest to come up with more programs so that we are not sending more and more students to a school that can arbitrarily raise their tuition by 10%. So we're driving more and more of these students outside of our district and killing our own budget in the process. New England Science and Staling program is a unique program and an amazing program that we have for our kids. We're actually discussing reducing security in our schools, and these days, we're already having a number of issues. That's a hard no for me. I don't care if we have to go back to the Board of Finance and say, "We couldn't come up with 400 grand." I'm not cutting security.
I agree.
I think we saw in the survey that we undertook this year in regards to security, I think that needs to come up.
Yes, I agree. I can't, I can't.
I'm happy to remove it.
I'd also like to add to that, the nurse position. I don't see how we can even consider having, letting a nurse go, especially one that's already shared.
I can, I agree with Mr. Brown on the readiness. Obviously, the readiness is, the summer school. I could also go on more on PHS Assistant Principal. I agree, I mean, that's something that I think, I think that's something that we can do.
I would note on that media center, I'd like to see the restructuring come to the board, so we can understand how that restructuring will work, just because I think there's ways where, if we are to restructure, we can also make it merge into our strategic plan a little as well.
I agree. Yeah, I agree with that.
Would you like, would you remove the nurse?
No. Oh, yeah, move, remove from this list, yes.
My only question in regards to the nurses, right now, that split between Shepherd Hill and PHS, so is it 50/50?
Well, so it's, it's split between Shepherd Hill and PHS, but, you know, given, given the way our schools operate, given the laws around giving medicine to children, I don't know that just say, it's budgeted as split between those two schools, but we have nurses that provide coverage to each other all the time. So you will often see, you know, having an LPN in district, which was originally placed at Shepherd Hill for pre-K and supporting pre-K, having that position, especially now, given the high medication needs, individuals move around and handle those pieces. So I would, again, there are very few things on this list that I think we don't need. We're in a difficult scenario, but I would.
Can you explain, then, what effect you would have for nurse coverage between the two schools if this position weren't eliminated?
I'm going to pass that over to Mr. Sugarman to supervise nurses. They're now supervised by Mrs. Fitch. Don't at all be offended that I went to Mr. Sugarman, he's sitting closer.
Just a few, just a few. So every school that has students in it, Early Childhood Center, Shepherd Hill, Bus Up, Memorial, Central, and the high school, all have one nurse in it, an RN. The LPN is a position that has to be supervised by an RN. So that's why the LPN is shared between two schools. The LPN was originally at Shepherd Hill, because pre-K was there. Anyone that's worked with little three-year-olds and four-year-olds, that's a very unique environment. So it was there. When that moved to ECC, is when we added the RN at the ECC building. We kept the LPN, and it split between the high school and Shepherd Hill, where in the morning, the LPN is at the high school, supporting morning medication as students come in. And after things kind of get settled at the high school, she would transition to Shepherd Hill. But very frequently, she can operate, she has to operate under somewhat direct supervision of an RN.
Are these, are each one of these schools, they have an RN, are they full-time positions?
Yes.
Okay, so the LPN just flows underneath the.
Flows slowly between Shepherd Hill and.
Are they ask us, oh, the RN already positioned there?
I think sometimes she has gone to the Central Memorial Campus, because even though that campus has two RNs, she can technically, because the way that school is put into the Office of Public Health, she can technically help and be at Memorial and be under the direct supervision of the nurse at Central School.
So we do have RNs at each school?
Yes, we do.
I still don't agree. We're talking about, like, directly eliminating some of your jobs right now.
Do you have parents that help in the nurses' offices?
I'm sorry.
Do you have parents that help in the nurses' offices?
We do not.
That's something you might consider.
Do parents can administer a medication?
No, but you have the.
What's, I just, I want to know, what's the total of all of these suggested cuts?
Well, so I have to pull some things out, because the, for each one of these, there's two options, right? So the media center, there's two different options of how we could do that. For the, for having, reducing an elective program, there's two different options of how we could do that. If we did all of the other pieces there, everything I could possibly offer, if all of these programs were cut, which I feel would be devastating, would be 636.
So we have, we have room to move.
Yeah, just these two items.
I have a question about the elective. So do we have, we had someone submit for a retirement just last month, right?
We do. So, so I need to be cautious how I have the conversation publicly. I can't identify a staff member for a cut via contract, so I can't identify, if we have a department that is one person, I can't publicly say, "This is this one person in department," because by default, I'm identifying them. What I would say is, we have an elective position that retired. If we do not fill that position, I believe that program will not continue at the high school. It is not my recommendation of that to be done. I guess I'm looking for guidance from the board as to whether or not you would like my feedback on the recommended cuts, or whether like you would like to have further discussion.
I think we're still working through at this point in time.
That's what you're in quote unquote.
Yeah.
Would help form some opinions with your intimate case of.
So let me walk through a few things, and I'll give you a few bullet points on each one, just to give you feedback. So, the assistant principal is on this list because the town has asked since I've come for me to consider whether or not we have too many administrators. I'm trying to think of the budget in long term. While it's not a significant reduction in this budget, it is a significant reduction in next year's budget. And if we need to make a reduction in that area, it has to be made two years in advance.
I think we're all in agreement on that.
The, the LPN, I think is difficult. I'm providing options to the board, because we've got our legal responsibility. The Sacred Heart interns, we can reduce. I would note that when we reduce those interns, there are unanticipated costs. I'd like to, a member of the audience here said unrealized gains. There's unrealized cost in that when we reduce those interns, we will have additional cost and subs. The media center retirement by replace or restructure, the $55,000 number is saying that we're going to hire specific para. The $85,000 number is saying we're going to reassign another staff member in that, so we would not be doing those pieces. I have spoken with Dr. Bitgood. That was Dr. Bitgood's recommendation. Having half an elective, I think would be difficult to fill, but it is an option if we're in really dire straits. I would hate to lose a program at our high school when our students are making hard choices about high schools. The reduction of computer purchases, I would note that in last year's budget, we made significant reductions of computer purchases at this time, reducing $60,000, I believe, at the end. I think a full $40,000 would be difficult. However, I do want to offer all opportunities. And reduction of other supplies was, was my way of acknowledging that if I needed to go back to my administrative team, my administrative team was willing to do some things to see what they could do. However, I would note, when I presented the budget, I presented a chart that talked about how much had been increased every year. And there were many years where we were, last year was only 1.06. There were several years we were cut, there were many years when the increase was essentially zero. So we've been slowly riddling down on those accounts over the last decade. Those accounts are not rich. We are not budgeting for fuel and heat at high prices, and I really don't believe there's a lot of room there. However, I wanted to offer options to the board.
Personally, I'd like to see the library go through the restructuring. I think that based on how it's been utilized, I think there is room. I think we can blend that with some of our strategic goals. So I'd like to go to that option. Between the ECC, the summer school, and the library, that gets us to 397, 767. I believe that in good faith to the town, because it's done something that's discussed amongst the town, we have to undertake the PHS Assistant Principal and go to one full-time vice principal. We've heard a lot about our declining enrollments. We know that every year, that's something that the Board of Finance has asked us. If we do that, that gets us to 442, 767. And it's my personal recommendation that we take, we don't do the full computer and the full supply cuts, but we cut 10,000 off of that number. We just take 20,000 together between the two of those, because that would get us to 462, 767.
So 20,000 total in supplies that we would work out in the 600 line among the administrative team?
Correct. And then that would give you, keeping some of the computers as well, that would give you 30,000 for the computer purchases.
Yes, what I'm actually asking for, though, ten each gets us there, but what I would ask the, ask the board for is to give me the opportunity to go back to, because they're all supply equipment line, to then go back to my administrators and say, "Where would we do this?" And if, if we're able to do.
And I don't know if with computer purchases, if there would be extra ways that we could maybe pursue grants or pursue something that will offset some of that. So I'm good with leaving flexibility in those two calls.
I have a question about the summer school program. Will that in any way affect the meals that were offered at the same time?
No. Let's talk about what it will affect. So we offer summer meals at multiple sites as part of our federal free reduced lunch summer program. That's continued. So students who participate in Park and Rec will have that piece. What it does impact is that a lot of families did use our summer programming as an additional form of childcare, then partnering in the afternoon in Park and Rec. We will not have those programs that will occur in the morning and then bus students to Park and Rec program. So that would be something that we would communicate. And following this meeting tomorrow, I would communicate that to families in the best way possible, probably by throwing it.
I personally would like to hear from the superintendent, what you, what would you like to choose for cuts?
I think that the restructure is spot on. The assistant principal is a difficult piece. Here's, here's the challenge. The, the challenge is, I don't really want to cut any of these things. The readiness merge was done to be there. When we take a look at personnel, we have to make a tough decision. Are we cutting personnel or a program? The reality is, is families are excited about New England Science and Staling, and have students coming to our schools because of that program. So let's think of it in this way. If I'm paying $7,000 in tuition for every child who goes, choose to go somewhere else, and I get a small number of kids, I get, you know, five kids, six kids who agree to come to our school because we have that program, we've saved that in tuition, so I think there's a savings there. Summer school, I think at this point, unfortunately, has to be cut. The reason why I think summer school has to be cut is because last year, when we had planned our summer school, we began planning in February, and by April, we were sending letters home to families. It's May 3rd, and we have staff who have found other summer programs to work in, because we haven't been able to guarantee it would run. So I think that, I think at this point, it is unfortunately a victim of a difficult budget season. I agree with Ms. Haskell in the conversations with the board before, given class reduction and the town's repeated request for us to show we are being fiscally responsible, I, if, if an administrative cut needed to be made, that's the only one that could be made. It's difficult for me to cut an LPN right now, given where we are in mental health. The largest thing I hear is mental health, the largest thing I hear is dysregulation. I can tell you that there wasn't an administrator on my team when I put that forward there. We were trying very much to balance things across all lines of if we were to have every program. I think that would be a difficult cut. As I said, the interns, I don't know that the full savings is 30,000. Dr. Bitgood was the one who spoke to me about the media center retirement. He had said he felt he could reallocate staff in the building for the full 85. Given the retirements we have right now, I'd like to fill that position and maintain that position. Given the retirements we have right now, I'd like to fill that position and maintain that I don't know that I have a better plan, Roxanne, going down the line. I think this is the best worst plan.
I'm glad that you did mention Dr. Bitgood's feedback on there, because these are some pretty significant changes to his building, and I'd certainly like to hear what he has to say about it. I mean, I'm sure his thoughts on it are pretty similar to mine in general, but how he would
I can have Dr. Bitgood speak to that at the Board meeting, which takes place at the town, which is actually before the public vote.
Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion to adopt the cuts to the ECC, the summer school program, the library restructuring, the PHS administrator, and $20,000 combined between computer purchases and supplies.
Begrudgingly so moved.
Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Would...
Any extension?
I said, no, I said I would sustain.
You said yes, so you're saying you're staying for it?
Yeah.
I said you'd sustain.
Okay, so... All right, motion carries. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Any extension?